Welcome to the Nelson City Council Meeting, June the 4th, 2024. We'll go ahead and open up our meeting and have a call to invocations. Father God, once again, just thank you for today, Lord. Thank you for each and every person here willing to serve, Father God, and better our community. We're asking that you would lead, guide, and direct us in all the decisions that we make. We ask that you would be with our police, our firemen, our EMTs, our servicemen here and overseas, Father God. Walk with them, keep them safe, Father. We ask that you stand in the. Crouch allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, in the best will deliver its justice for all.
Cliche approval. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda for C? Can I get a second? William, can I favor? Nina, Alice, thank you. Public appearance. Is there anybody here who has comments for tonight regarding our agenda? We'll go ahead and move to approval of our minutes. Can I get a motion to approve the May the 6th, 2024 council meeting minutes? Can I get a second? Jane, Paula, Dana? Nina? Can I get a motion to approve the May the 28th, 2024 special call public hearing minutes? Let's see, can I get a second? Nathan, Paula, Dana? Nina, thank you very much. Next up is our department reports. Lieutenant Deesus isn't here, but if he comes in, we'll come back around to him. Mayor's report. So Pickens County is supporting the city of Nelson with clearing some of these larger trees that we have. We had a couple that were very large that were down. So just making sure, I know we have a lot of folks watching our council meetings, letting folks know that we do have support from Cherokee and Pickens County for trees that are down in our roadways. If it's on your property, that's on you. If you have a tree blocking your road, you can always call the City Hall. Kelsey is, what is the term they call you? It's the emergency management.
The city's part of the CCEMA, Cherokee County Emergency Management Association, and they're doing stuff in Pickens.
Yeah, so Kelsey is our person here. She's been training. If there's issues, the counties both call her, give her updates and stuff like that. We also, if it's severe weather, then we send that out as well. But trees that are on their own property belong to the individual. So there's been some questions about, well, Joe's tree fell on Sally's in Sally's yard. His responsibility is that it's a civil matter. However, what we found is, is that what's in Sally's yard is Sally's and what's in Joe's yard is Joe's. So regardless of if it's a live tree, correct?
From what I've found.
That's what we found. So we got called in. Have you heard anything different from that? That's the only thing that we can find.
On which one?
On the live tree business. So if you have a dead tree, from what I understand, you have to send a registered letter saying, hey, you've got a dead tree in your yard and you need to take it down. If you don't, if all the my houses on you, something like that, not paraphrasing. And then you could go back on the owner. If you don't do that, and a tree, say it's a live tree, and the live tree falls from wind or tornado or whatever, it's considered an act of God, and that goes against you, whatever on your property is you, and whatever's on the property that the tree fell on belongs to the folks. Have you heard that?
I am nowhere.
Okay.
It has, I mean, you have the small knowledge that the tree was alive, so if it's clearly dead, no leaves, nothing, then that would be lose the knowledge.
But I say that to say that some of these trees that fell are, they were huge, like there were 200-year-old trees. So the county came in and has helped. They had the they had the equipment to move those trees, trucks and things like that. And to be honest with you, as long as we have support from both counties, I don't see any need for us to incur the expense of having a vehicle or equipment that we can do that with. So thanks to Pickens County and the Cherokee for helping us out with that. Next up is, I had a meeting with Bill Wood, and I can say this now in public forum. So they are working with a company called Rochester. The contract with Rochester has been approved. This is going to evaluate capital improvement and T-Swast revenues. They're looking, Pickens County is looking at adding a T-Swast for Pickens County that would handle roads, streets, and bridges, and then the remainder of the Swast would be for infrastructure, buildings, things like that, and our parks and parks. So a city of our size, that would go a long way in helping us. If we had roughly the same amount of money coming in for roads and streets as we do for Swast, then we could very well manage all of our roads and streets and keep them in excellent condition, as well as have plenty of money to do the other things that we need to do inside the city as far as quality of life for our citizens. Let's see. The T-Swast, I'm going to be working with the county with regards to putting our projects together. Miranda and I are going to look at that together. We're going to put our projects together. So when T-Swast is advertised, we go in with a plan. This is what we have planned. We have sidewalks that we need. It'll help with the sidewalks for our park, things like that, you know. So we'll go in with our plan based off of our capital improvement plan. I'll run, when we do a work session, we'll run it by each of you so we can look at it, make sure that it's complete before we get with Bill and have that conversation. So that's coming. Be, I'll look out for that. The pre-hon digest, I was hoping to have by the end of this week. It's not out yet. I'm going to be reaching back out for that preliminary digest from Pickens County. We already have the one from Cherokee. So I'll keep you posted on that as well. The digest deadline that we need for the actual digest is July 15th, but we need it before then so we can look at our numbers for our budgets and stuff like that, because Miranda's already done it. That was my meeting with Mr. Wood. The next one was, I met with Thomas Benton today. He is the big guy for Mark Marietta, Corey. He said, free dirt to Nelson. If you guys need free dirt, let me know. So you'll have to come get it, but we can have free dirt, which is good because we're fixing out that grading project down and stuff for our new park. So I was happy to hear that. They're happy to be partnering with us as well. They said their annexation paperwork should be ready. They're hoping within the next 30 days. It's gone to the attorney for conversation.
It's gonna be that good dirt like we got from that good.
Was it good?
Yeah.
Well, he said.
We'll let you check it. We'll let you check it.
Okay.
So that was a good thing, and I expressed our gratitude for the popcorn machine and for sponsoring Movie Night for us and coming out and just being a part of our community. Next up, I had to reschedule my meeting with the Fire Chief and with the County Manager for Cherokee County due to, it's the same day that we need for training. So they're working on new dates for us. And I've also, did we hear back from Tim Prether with Pickens? Yeah. We'll reach out to Tim again, trying to get a meeting with Tim prior to a meeting with them too, so I can have that conversation with him, talk about leveraging points and also partnering with Pickens County as well for fire services. I also met with a company called VC3. Cybersecurity is huge right now, as you know. Jasper got hit. They're not the only ones. For my understanding, Cherokee got hit as well. I think they got caught. Who else got, was somebody in that meeting down with Scott that was around that said that they? I can't do it. Anyway, with, Bob has not been well, and that's who was doing it for us. He was doing security and stuff for us. There is a grant that's put out for Homeland Security that will cover four years of services for this, for VC3. VC3 is the only cybersecurity group that GMA will endorse. So most of the cities use them. If we could get four years for free, I would love it. So they're coming down in July to have a conversation with us, look at what we have, see how they could help us, and help us with a grant, which I'll drag Miranda into for that. Keep our business safe. Next up, Movie Night, June the 15th. We're showing the movie Migration. Again, we've got Mark Marietta partnering with us and also Blue Ridge Marble is also going to be partnering with us to put Movie Night on. So bring your lawn chairs, come out, have some popcorn with us. And ice cream. The ice cream truck's coming back, so. I also signed a proclamation with GMA to promote literacy, and we'll be doing mayor's readings. I've been purchasing books myself to pass out to kids that come for reading. That way we can try to get kids reading through the summer. It's just a way to reach our community and love on a little bit. Kelsey and I hope to have our two little libraries for the parks by the end of July, and I'm going to be looking for books for those as well. I did get with Daryl Russell about our table for the, we had talked about it, about doing the marble inlay. I talked with Evan about getting me a piece of marble. He will do it. And it'll be a live wood finish, which will go nicely with, you know, I think will be a nice representation for the town, and it's less than originally thought to, so. We're not going to use epoxy because from what I understand, it's $16 for an ounce or something. Right now it's outrageous. Welcome to Nelson Sign. They have been covered up over at Blue Ridge Marble there. They had, I guess, some of the wind damage hit there as well and tore some of their stuff up. So everybody, he's got all hands on deck working on that, but he does hope to have me a design by the end of July. Kelsey Trout demo. Do we have a date for that yet?
It should be this week or next week. The payments already been done. You know, I already talked to Jonathan.
So the demo, I'm going to say construction complete on the demo by the end of this month, by the end of June. It'll be done before that, but we'll just put end of June. I have a meeting with Barry and Lori coming up to update drawings on ours, on our new storm drain project. Now that we, I can see. Okay, so we closed on the property today. That will help us with our storm drain project. So I reached out to Barry, let him know that that had happened, and he's there working on the update now. And then we're going to meet on site, so sometime next week. And then from there, once he has that done, it'll come back before the board, and then we'll put it out for bid. So we're still within that August timeframe that we were looking at. Just on a note, Ms. Ann's out this week. She's on vacation. And that's all I have. I know that was a lot, but it's still a lot going on. So any questions on that stuff? John? James, William? I'll keep you guys informed. John did express, I do have a spreadsheet on my computer, and for any of you that want, I don't mind emailing you what I have. It is raw notes, so don't hold me accountable for grandparent errors, please. I do it late at night.
John will beat you for your handwriting, too.
I know. So on my grandpa errors, I just, I don't need them. I type late at night without coffee. Next up is our finance report, and I'll go ahead and turn it over to you, Miranda.
All right, so we're into the last month of this fiscal year. Currently, our revenues are exceeding what we had budgeted for, about 3%, 3.5%. And we have 7% remaining. We should have 8%, so a little over budget. I do have some amendments that are going to be coming. We're going to do that the first meeting, the meeting in July.
We're going to be over by 7%?
No, we're at 7% remaining, so we should be 8%. So about 1% over. But if you look, most of that, yeah, most of that's, you got to take in the fire tax.
Oh, that came in above?
Yeah, there's a couple of different things, but because our revenues are exceeding what we had budgeted for, it's going to offset, so it's not like we're hurting. We've got more, we've got excess revenues over expenditures.
Okay.
Yeah, we just got to balance it back out because it's not balanced right now.
Okay, so once you do the amendments, then it'll even out?
Awesome. Yes, so we'll do that in July meeting, and is that going to be the first, the first?
That's what's on the calendar. We'll see if we change, because July 4th is coming up, so I don't want to be out of town.
If you guys could take a look really quick, July the 1st, the 4th is on Thursday, the Monday is the 1st. Do you guys want to keep that day, or do you want to push it out to the 8th?
I'll be out of town.
You'll be out of town?
We'll be doing military and stuff.
John, you're going to be out of town also, aren't you?
Yeah.
So we really, we would have a forum if you three want to do it, or if you want to push it to the 8th, then you would have four of you.
That's if you don't mind.
We're going to have a regular meeting, right?
Yeah, I was sitting here trying to think of the timeline.
We're supposed to have everything set up July 31st for Cherokee.
We will have to probably need to call a meeting. It'll probably be in the middle of July, so we might be able to make it happen on July 8th, but there's no way by July 1st. So we can call a meeting in July, or we can do the meeting in July 1st and then call another meeting around the 15th or 20th, potentially, maybe even later in the month. But I don't think we'll have it done by July 8th either. So we're going to have to have a meeting and have another talk.
Okay, so I don't think there's a ton on our July the 1st meeting. Are you comfortable with having three people?
Yeah.
Okay, then.
And you can have people call over there, too.
Yeah, if you want to call out. Let's go ahead and leave it on July the 1st, and then we'll back into a work session on July the 1st. You'll know more then, right?
Okay, so bank balances. General Fund, $997,692. Swast 4, $129,584. Swast 5 is $1,017,300. Cash Reserve Fund, $168,465. Swast 2020, $969,297. And the Grant Fund, $194,942. I'm going to do a transfer for the cash reserve. I'll talk to you that number, we'll see. I think that's about all I have. I wanted to follow up with Sylvia on the T-Swast. We should be thinking about that, but we also are going to have Swast, the new Swast referendum for Pickens. I'm going to confirm that as well. So we need to get any more.
Let's talk about that, because I want to get all of my stuff together so we can maximize our efforts. And they already know that we've got the City Hall on there, so as a level one. I left my pageant that you printed off that had all of my numbers for, go down through the comments. I just want to make sure I have something. So my pageant's there. I'll get it when we go in, unless I need to have it out there. Thank you guys, thank you. So that's it for you, Miranda? I apologize, now, I don't have a piece of paper or any unfinished business? Or does anybody have any questions with regards to the financial statement? Next up is going to be unfinished business, HI zoning amendments A. It's going to be A.A.
The zoning amendments A.A. because I was going to send something for that, but I haven't gotten any.
You're going to see them July. Surprise to you. Okay, that's okay, because it's going to be on the July, it's going to be on the July, it's going to be on the July anyway, but it's just an amendment we'll look it over. If you could make sure he's on track with that.
I will follow up with him. I think he's out until this week at all.
Okay, because we could go over it on the 1st and then vote on it when we do our work session.
It's table to July.
The next up is tree ordinance. I know we went over those last week. John Orberg, I believe, had something on those that he wanted to share.
I did a slightly different approach than you. What I did, I went through the whole ordinance, and I made assumption that it's important that we have trees, and we need that aspect of city's beauty. So city ordinance should be part of it, and it's also, in my opinion, should be easy to enforce. So when I looked at that, I found that zones R15, 2040 don't have any information about requirement. So R2, they just have a reference to landscape and buffer requirement, but not really green belt buffer. For MCGC, LI, and HI require landscape area and a special section. So landscapes and buffer requirement, which requires a buffer zone, and they refer to the section 106.5. That talks about deep tree protection and landscaping, and we discussed that earlier. So that is a 10-page-long ordinance. When we look at, it only refers to industrial and to which renovation of an existing building app are greater than 51%. So exempt are singular residential, so it's always very specific. This is too detailed. We talked about that. When you look at recent annexation, the weakness of the ordinance, if you look at that buffer zone, it is not really buffer zone. It doesn't have it. And there is one more reference in zoning, and that is Division 105. And it talks about buffers, and it only refers to proposed development. So it's nothing about, it's very specific. So when I look at that, if we want an ordinance that includes tree preservation, I think that the residential zones need a tree ordinance that I suggest called Trees. Industrial zones would keep their landscape and buffer requirement. We changed the reference to two new orders, one for trees and one for buffers. Then we delete 106.5 and simplify the language, and I have including an example from Helen, Georgia. And that is very generic and easy, and it covers both trees and buffers. So my recommendation is, if we, when we look at this, look at the whole two changes, so we have an ordinance for trees that covers all zones.
So can I ask a question? Are you suggesting that for our residential folks, we tell them what they can take off their property and what they can't?
If you look at that one, it just talks about, if you look at it, it's a very generic discussion.
It is because it's personal property, though. I wouldn't want anybody telling me what I could keep on my property and what I can't.
But it mentioned that it's important. So what they have here, in areas where substantial tree curries exist, as many trees as possible shall be preserved. And where we don't have any trees that we have planted hardwood trees.
So Daze Ordinance states that they do not require any tree preservation. The only requirement can be found under use and limitation. All front side and rear yards must be grassed.
We do have a conservation zone, for our conservation zoning thing for neighborhoods coming in that does specify, and that would be residential, if I remember correctly. But it's in, it's like nothing's together in the book. Everything's kind of peaceful.
Everything's peaceful?
Yeah.
So I'm not saying that everyone, I'm saying we need to have some kind of coverage because I look at the board, and I'm able to handle our trees. Nothing to beauty of what we have here, at least we have our trees.
But it's like, in Laurel Lake, we have a ton of pine trees. Those pine trees end up on people's houses. I mean, we've got so many downed pine trees right now. So I think it depends on the kind of tree, but if I, I've got three pine trees. I've got some yanked out of my yard. Just one is full of beetles, and the other one's just, if it's leaning, if it falls, it'll fall on my house. But I mean, when people clear out for their land, you're talking about a quarter acre lot inside Nelson. You're talking about an acre lot in Laurel Lake. I don't know, what's Winchester Oaks? An acre. So, yeah, so that's probably why they didn't have a preservation clause in there for residential.
And if they force them to have a buffer too, would you not? Going by what this says?
If you went by what the Helen, Georgia says, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, everybody in Nelson would be, I don't think that would work.
I don't think that would work either.
Also, most of the covered the tree grid line.
Generous markers would be the perimeter of the development, not the individual lots inside. Same thing, either residential or commercial.
So it's separating the districts, basically.
Yes, between two residential developments, you may not even have a buffer requirement. But between residential and HI.
You need also come with a buffer, but when you have a buffer requirement, you also need to be good buffer.
That's where you get into, you need to be looking into the plan too, and what you require for buffer. You require an undisturbed buffer, a vegetated buffer.
Well.
A buffer is not necessarily, a buffer is basically an undeveloped, I really like to use that term, an unused space between the two different uses. It could be flat and grass. They're just not allowed to use it.
And when this ordinance, the original ordinance was done, it was based on the fact that Nelson was already an established community. We were a mile radius. Everything was built out. We don't, we're landlocked. We didn't have a lot of, we don't have a lot of property. We do have a lot of properties that can be pulled in from Georgia Marble could pull properties in. We've annexed in Jeremy Denton. I know the, Mark Marietta is looking to annex in under, you know, the heavy industrial zoning there. And then Ratman Holdings, they have all of that, but it's out in the residential area, I mean, the heavy industrial area. So that's really going to be the only development that we have unless somebody comes in and decides to repurpose the property out north of, you know, of Pickens Street. And then I could see having some type of, you know, you said we've got a conservation zone, which I believe had to be used for, because it was brought up in here by Mike Havill at one time, Winchester Oaks was done, and also when Laurel Lakes was done. They left as many trees as possible and only cleaned out for the house, so we do have something in place for that.
Can we just adopt that and maybe buffer zoning thing, we don't have, we're just buffers and signs, I think we're kind of mingling together.
They are, so we could, you know, I'd take a look at that as well when we're looking at our, at our, at our thing. If we had a lot of land to develop, if we had a lot of land that we were developing inside, I could see making, you know, some of these changes.
Well, a lot of cities don't have tree protection at all.
Yeah.
Like it's in Helen, generally.
I'm not making that to read over this really good. And I mean, maybe some things will, I'll put one on there.
What happens with, what does being in Helen, the, in areas where no trees exist, hardwood trees or at least eight feet in height must be planted, like, what is that?
You can take an area that's been, say, mass graded or something, and we'll probably put some trees back in.
I mean, it's kind of like, how many and like?
That's where you run into a lot of stuff, because I'm seeing a lot of issues mainly downtown areas, but I'm starting seeing a lot of, a lot of the bigger communities, still mass graded areas, but you've got a house that's, you've got street driveway about 13 feet on average, sidewalk in that area, they're making them put a hardwood tree right in the middle of the front yard. You've got 20 feet between the sidewalk and the front of the house, and you've got nothing but dead grass and tinsel. They're horrible. So you can go, you can go the wrong direction with requirements too.
I see that a lot, with mature trees that have caused more damage, because they put them in a space that they're not supposed to be in.
Not big enough.
Yeah. Just interesting language.
Tree preservation and re-establishment are two different things anyway. In tree preservation, you just, somebody coming in developing a Winchester Oaks or acre lots, you don't want them to come in and mass grade that, especially, but there could be lots that have to be graded more, depending on the septic requirements, the average lot, so.
Now I like the idea of keeping our tree ordinance and updating what we do have. I like, I like that, I mean, because I think that with what Jeff said, the way that we adopted our HI, we control what, what we allow to come in and what we allow to be built, you know, we have control of that. And we would, we would follow state guidelines with buffer zones and, and things of that nature. So if we want to add, if we wanted to add something to that, we could. I'd like to see what you did, I need to go, I need to pull it, I need to see what you did, what we did, and then, and then look at this as well.
We need to exclude, like, exclusionary provisions for areas of zoning that actually exist within the city. Because right now, the holding, one that has exemption is Central Business District, and one that has Central Business District.
Well, we need to, I think we agreed that we needed to remove that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one gets removed, but. I'll do a little work on that, because I liked, I liked, I liked having the basis, and I think we all did, of, of this, but really scaling it back to things that did not, that did not really apply to the city.
And then we already have in the other zoning parts, like, it's redundant in a lot of, you know. Which William did good with his redlining, you know, and he was like, nope, that's already in the other parts. Nope, that's already in another, there's just a lot of extra language. But I think, as we talked about, it needs to have more teeth. Once we get it to where we want it to be, I mean, fines need to be.
The fines doing it, that is one of the concerns, yeah.
They need to be a deterrent instead of, nah. There's no point having it if we're not gonna have the fines as a deterrent. I mean, otherwise, why, why have the tree ordinance at all? If everybody just says nah, then.
Yeah.
You don't have, you're a lot, Dave.
What?
You don't have any trees on your lot, Dave.
I don't, I have to pad it.
Nick, what are your thoughts?
No, I have a lot of thoughts.
Oh, you did, I know when we spoke last, and I think everybody agreed to, everybody agreed they liked the tree ordinance. And then William just went through and took out the rest of it, so I think that's a part of the city.
I like what William done, and I was, I was good with that.
You going around, William, your thoughts?
The enforcement aspect's still a big, we're still just saying we keep cleaning it up, like I said, getting rid of a lot of sections that are redundant. Some of these are figuring density in areas and all that, I mean. Just like I said, for the foreseeable future, probably the pretty long-term future, any development we still get's gonna be a large lot, because we might run into places that are on a hit. I mean, to cover those areas, you could pop something in there about just the. I let us say that one time. About the, you know, the development plan for the community would only include any clearing for streets and infrastructure, because you're still gonna be, every lot's gonna be different. Like I said, you could have a one acre lot that has, it's got great soil, a small septic tank film, a small footprint house, and you could have the lot next door, you may have to clear three quarters of the lot just to get the septic taken.
My thing is, is do we really want, do we really want to get down to the weeds and tell people what they can do with their lot? And I don't, that's up to you guys, but I, I think we've taken enough liberties from people.
I think we're still controlling on the development end.
Yes.
But I agree with you as far as.
R40 and R20.
Especially as far as, no, you can't cut that tree down. I mean, that's. If you're just gonna just run somebody $80,000 fine for cutting trees down on property.
Who do?
That's what I heard today.
Oh, wow, I mean.
I'd only say hearsay than that, I don't know what's written, so.
But the development end and the enforcement aspect, I think those are our biggest, I think those are our biggest concerns, because our city is a, is an established city.
You know, somebody, I mean, you wouldn't want me coming in the middle of Winchester Oaks, maybe clear cut my property just to have a field, I mean, that goes against.
Well, even with the conservation things that we have in place, if you look at Laurel Lake, they cleared only for the septic and the, the house, they still left trees in the front, trees in the back.
Conservation community, kind of like Cherokee County uses stuff like that, that just means mainly that you're gonna, again, goes back to the developer, dedicating buff, bigger buffer areas, more areas conserved that they don't develop anything to begin with. It don't necessarily mean that the home is restricted from doing something.
Exactly, yeah, the developer only cleared for the house, the driveway, and the septic.
I suppose all of this stuff is developer-driven, not home-driven.
I like, and I like that, because, I mean, I, I had folks misunderstand that over, you know.
See, there, boo boo, curb to curb.
Yeah, we, we have curb to curb and not the 10-foot right away, which would allow the city to go and help some of the older people when they had a tree down, take it from the right of way out, so. James, you're up. You did, okay, all right, back to you, John, for closing.
So this was, to me, it's important to have something when mentioning of trees, not reinforcing, not the same, encouraging people to cut trees.
All righty, we will, if we've covered that one, we're gonna, we're gonna put this back on July to vote, or we want to push it to August to vote?
I put it back to July to vote.
Well, we've gotta, we've gotta come up with our, we've gotta come up with our, I think July, we really should review the penalties, no, we really need to look at the, at, at that enforcing, you know, what we do. I think we, the enforcement aspect of it, and we need to look closer at the development aspect of it. Make sure that we, it's all where we want it, and then, can I get you to mesh yours and mine together? We need to do that, and then we've got, this is a stand home to, to take a look at as well. And then we can, we can go from there, so. And then, and then let's look at the enforcement aspect. Do you know what, off the top of your head, I know you probably don't, but do you know what Holly Springs does as far as enforcement and stuff like that?
No, like I said, Woodstock, they're, it can get into, like I said, they, by understanding, I wasn't involved in it, is they actually wrote a developer $80,000 fine the other day for going in and cutting trees off, but finished, developed, been there for years, property, it was a property owner wanted them gone. And there's been a few of them, and they did, they have a calculation per size of the tree and over the acreage and stuff like that, that they use for their fines, but.
So the property owner couldn't take the trees down because he ordered them down?
It was a commercial development, but with a homeowner's rent too. Woodstock has, they actually issue a tree removal permit, it's a free permit, it doesn't cost anything. You're allowed on a, I don't deal with it a whole lot, I get drunk every now and then. I don't know anything about what it is on a commercial property, which that's what this one was, but a residential property, you're allowed to take out a homeowner up to five a year over a certain size. But every zoning business has like an amount that you have to maintain on a property also, so many inches per acre or whatever. But, yeah, they, they control what you can take down, it's, it's a constant battle.
I don't ever turn into that.
It's one of those things, it's, it's good and it's bad, again. Winchester Oaks, it'd look pretty crappy in there if anybody's winning all of a sudden.
It's, it's.
And clear cut the property.
Yeah, I like what.
I feel like you, when you've got the development coming in, in the volume that Woodstock has, you, I mean.
Well, there you run into too, I mean, you got suburbs, so you've got a lot of, you talk about 5,000 square foot houses, we got, we got 800 square foot lots.
Yeah.
Counting something like this.
Yeah, I can see where that would be.
Yeah, it's a lot, it's a lot of difference, I said, the big thing is try to control it on the, the top end, but I'm all for property rights too, but I'd hate for neighbors on either side of the end.
Right.
Some ways they would, some ways they wouldn't, and then again, it goes back into, okay, well, did they treat the property properly after they cut them out? Did you just turn it into a soil erosion problem? Did they go ahead and cut it and push big piles of brush everywhere, that they just, just because they wanted the trees down? One of those things, yeah, I don't think we should be involved in a whole lot of what people do on the properties, but there should still be some guidelines that people should agree to and want to follow.
Yeah. Yeah, the question is, is do what, does what we have.
It ain't like our H2A has to say so.
Yeah, no, our H2A does too, so.
That's one of those things, you sign up for that, you sign the paper.
I don't think, like I said, we're such an established community that we don't see that being a, a huge issue unless we have people want to annex it. And at that time, we could amend or adjust or, you know, revamp that area for R20, R40, or, or development. We could, we could add a little.
Problem we're gonna run into is, who's gonna review a, something happens, we've annexed in for those properties out there, then somebody all of a sudden, oh, there's eight of us selling our property to this one guy, we've got 80 acres down here now, and somebody wants to come in and annex it in and build a subdivision. Who's gonna review the plans to see if they comply with this?
The building inspection company does offer that. You're aware, Thomas, a commercial stuff you definitely have to go through.
Yeah, if that happened, if we ran into that, we could, we could, and, and I've also been, Cherokee County and Pickens County has offered to help us review whatever, since we're a small city, and we don't have the project management for that. And, and, and point you the knowledge, I don't have the knowledge for it. So they say, hey, if you have something like that, bring it to us, or we'll come to you and we'll review it and help, and help you put some, you know.
Basically, right now, then, what you would be doing is putting as far as your requirements for density and all that, it's still. Currently, right now, we'll put it back on the developer to present a plan showing they're in compliance.
Yes.
This is not something one of us will have to sit down and try to count trees.
Exactly.
So that's a developer's expense right now. So we don't have anything much in place as far as our penalties, and the problem is, when you're talking about a city ordinance violation, you're basically pinning down a misdemeanor, you can't get too zealous with finding on a misdemeanor anyway, generally. I mean, most of ours are limited, as far as code enforcement type stuff, it's a lot of those will fall under 100 bucks a day, basically, up to a certain amount. Now, take the tree cutting down there, there could have been a stock or cord replaced. The fine might not have been much, but the job could have been shut down and stopped, so. That's one of the bigger deterrence over a fine in most cases, because like I said, the problem's, it's a lot of stuff you're dealing with, something's only gonna go as far as a misdemeanor anyway. Your accrual period could be probably extended out. Could have done their work, you know, driving a violation, you give them guidelines to say to reestablish what they've done. Until then, you put them on a clock, every day they've done another violation, you build it up that way. It gets into that stuff, you're gonna talk to the fellows over there.
Yeah. All right, well, we'll put it back on July to review again, and review, or just put it on there for, I can't see how loaded it. Just review, and Chris is gonna put the two together for us, and then enforcement aspects, so, and I'll do some research on that.
There might be a question to ask, how far can you go as far as?
I'll take a look, I'm gonna take a look at some folks in South Georgia, I know there's other people who dream of this, and I'm gonna find out, I'll find out the.
I'm not sure, some of the faculty, the fines on what gets cut down, now they're having time to deal with it very often, but they're gonna pencil pretty heavy ones, maybe, but a lot of times they get turned over to people.
And Woodstock is so dense, though, I mean, you don't have, I could see where they would learn to preserve as many trees as they could, because it's not even gonna end up like Texas, and have, just, you're just gonna be able to see houses for garbage units.
But I said, we run into the problem now, 10, 12-year-old developments, it's kind of oak tree in the middle of a front yard that's only the size of this room, and it's where you can have it on the property. Those things get cut out, we're having to let people cut the trees out that they were required by zone to put in, because this wasn't a good plan, it's not, but they were required.
And I think, like, like I said, with us being established, it's a lot easier to look at a development, see what somebody has, and then, you know, just make sure that we can make a.
No, new development, I mean, you can work with it, because you're gonna have big buffers and keep them out of drainage areas and stuff like that, you can be able to maintain some tree cover, and it should just be part of their plan. If they don't have a plan, they don't touch it.
Yeah. Okay, well, we'll put it back on for July, and then, Lieutenant Lises, are you here?
I am.
You wanna, you wanna go ahead and deliver your police report really quickly to us?
Didn't want to interrupt.
You're fine, we just, we're short on back to you.
Okay, well, I appreciate that. Some of the things that we talked about last time, the speeding issues, when we've been going around, and some people have been flagging us down, and the additional complaints we've been getting is debris that's falling off of vehicles and dump trucks and construction. We pulled quite a few vehicles over with that, I just, it's why I was late, I just pulled over two of them, but most of them have, for whatever reason, been passing through here. They're not, it's not a construction that's, that's happening here, they're either coming from Pickens, for whatever reason, through here to get to the dump, or coming way from Cobb and Fulton County, coming here to use this dump, for whatever reason, I don't know, it's cheaper, or what the reason is. Nonetheless, most of the driver's licenses, including this guy, just pulled over, was from Chicago, Illinois, and, and, and so they're all people that are here outside working, construction or other contract jobs here, so we have noticed that. that, and like I said, that's something that, we're, we're right by the dump, and we're constantly trying to get the marshal's office in there, but not coming through all these, these neighborhoods and so forth, is that something that you, sort of brought to you guys' attention at all?
A little bit, not that it's, that it's passed there, but other people, you've read us now, like, even if I was looking at the dogs up the like, you've read us now, Park Church, Headback Fifty Three, to avoid getting tape stuck, so there's some cut-throughs, but.
This is not new construction, like this, like, for example, this guy had all old retention walls, it was blown out, okay, so that's, that kind of debris, it's not new construction debris, so, that's just adds up, the people that are flagging us down and letting us know, that's, that's one of the complaints, the speeding is an ongoing complaint, so.
There's a couple cars in there, car owners, I don't know what they're talking about.
Yeah, and I think there was a, it was recently a, a pretty good accident off of, I forget what this road is, it's, it's the cut-through.
Five.
What is it?
There's probably five right here, and then you got Pickens Street, that is also Old Nelson Road, and then there's Rose Mountain.
Oh, it was a Rose Mountain.
Is it Ray Mountain?
I can't, I can't remember what I'm talking about, but it was, it was a pretty good wreck, and of course, the, it was a residential road, and so the people came out and said, that's the car that's always doing that, so, um, the motorcycle that we mentioned last time is still, we're, we're still getting complaints on that, and going through that, that road, I can't remember the name of that road, it seems, I'll, I'll, I'll text it to you.
Is it red, white, or yellow?
No, it's green.
Green.
It's green, and the car is a Subaru, blue Subaru car with, it's lowered, and the wheels are sticking out like that, I've seen the car numerous times, we have it identified, but whenever we see it, it's doing like fifteen miles an hour.
And it's a little red one at the top of the hillside too, but getting calls to call them, but I've seen them.
Have you seen the guys, um, coming in the park at night more?
Yes, parks also, I know they're doing some type of deal.
Our lights out down there, just have light, the one at the, the little park here, I noticed it last night when I was in them.
It was this one here?
No, the one, the, the old, it's definitely out, so.
Well, the guys asked me what the access to those cameras are, you, the guys.
They can come see anything they want, any recorded holds for several months, Cherokee's kind of gotten footage before, so.
And then you're aware that Ball Ground is new chief, and they're also increasing their, their hiring, they got approved to hire, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, I think the number supposedly is like ten or twelve, they're going to increase it, I'm not, I'm not sure, that's what I thought, he told me.
Geez. You have to, I'm going to pay you on this on Pickens also, I don't want to.
Yeah, the guy just pulled over, mentioned Pickens, Pickens is always pulling me over.
Oh, it's probably a stupid.
Are you driving like this over there?
Yeah, I drive in there all the time, but.
The G, all right, getting, he just retired from.
Marshal's office, and retired from the sheriff's office.
Yeah. Well, appreciate it, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, next up is going to be payment of attorney fees, um, we need to ratify these, we talked about these many years ago, so I don't really like what these, but it was back when, um, the case was Stephen Johnson, and, um, let's see what I can say.
Basically, it's already been free, we talked about an executive session, text messages where it was approved, and we just needed in the minutes that it's approved.
So, because we, we did it in executive session, it needs to be done out here and show that it's approved, so.
And it's an ongoing case.
It's an ongoing case.
Jeff can't represent because the council of veterans represents him and the attorney, and the judge.
So, you guys don't mind, I'm going to go ahead and ask for a motion to approve, uh, ratify the fees, attorney fees for this Stephen Johnson case.
I don't even remember talking about this, which is, it's a little like the chick was the last two-year-old.
It is, okay, well, they didn't open records class, so I had to go like check the text messages, or we had discussed it.
It's still a little more basically, I can say it, can I?
It's a ongoing case, we're about to get.
Two years later, but that was my.
Yeah, we're off to get subpoenaed anyway, it's an old case, and it's where I had death threats for my daughter, my grandson.
It's similar when we do a property, or when we did, you do it back there privately, and once it happens, you have to come out here, and we never came out here.
We never came on, but.
After the executive session, cleaning up the paperwork.
I'm cleaning up the paperwork, yes, so, if I can get a motion to approve the attorney fees for this, for the case.
I don't think.
We, James, on favor? Unanimous, thank you. All right, next up is COLA, I know we discussed, I'm going to lose this paper again, this one, um, we discussed our COLA, um, our COLA, um, and health insurance stipend in, in the executive session, wanted to do it out here, um, let me see where we were at with that, um.
The auditors have said that COLA has to.
COLA is, has to be, because it's, it's a finding, if we don't, COLA has to be separate from raises, I think the raises that we talk about in there, though, yeah, okay, that's what I, so those will go to the executive session, um, the COLA, though, for employees, we talked about for the upcoming fiscal twenty-five budget, um, we, we had talked about four percent, I think it was three point five or four percent, what did we do last year? I don't know, if you can tell me, I think Cherokee's doing seven, or.
I think it was.
They did five last year, they were.
I'll look and get one like that.
I think it was five last year, and then.
Four payments.
Four is what the state is doing, the state, number state.
So, I'm going to go ahead, I know we discussed four, the county.
That's what was accounted for.
And that's what we accounted for in the budget, because it was, we need to just put it in the minutes, and it needed to be done in public, so, um, and then the health insurance stipend, where we were at two fifty, and we were going up to, was it three hundred?
I think so.
And it was going to, yeah, and it was going, it doesn't say on mine, oh, that's because it's over here, sorry, so it was going up to three hundred from two fifty, okay, and it's in your, so, um, any questions on that before we vote? Okay, can I get a motion to approve the COLA, uh, four percent?
I need a motion for the four percent.
Chrissy McNeil, can I get a second?
Second.
William, second, all in favor? Unanimous, and then, can I get a motion to approve the increase for our insurance stipend, um, from two fifty to three hundred dollars?
Need a motion.
Chrissy?
Second.
James, all in favor? Unanimous, okay, and then, um, we do that, the next up is going to be our, um, our budget for, um, our fiscal twenty-five budget, this is the second hearing, correct? Or are we?
This is.
Okay, so we're done with our hearing, wow, all right, we've gone through all the paperwork, we've gone through, um, all of our hearings, can I get a motion to approve our budget?
Motion.
Okay, Chrissy, can I get a second?
Second.
James, all in favor? Unanimous, great, and then, our fiscal twenty-five capital improvement budget, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Chrissy, can I get a second?
Second.
James, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you, and then next up is, um, for new business, um, I think we talked about it during our work session, um, but our employee appointment for Pam Corbin, she's not here tonight, she's on vacation, but I would like to request, um, the appointment by the council for her, she's been for the sixty days, she's done an outstanding job, and I like her, so, she is, um, she's doing a good job, she's picking up, um, all kinds of stuff, assisting Kelsey with like, she's going to be, learning, assisting with audits and stuff, she's going to be instrumental in our projects, and, um, and she has the skills to do that, so.
She's pretty good, I like her.
She is a pretty, she's a pretty good, I, I, I like her own personality as well, pretty, you know, she seems to be really good with the people.
Yeah.
From what I've witnessed, and.
But this is not the same as the last lady that was talking.
No, I'll tell you later, just ask me, I'll share, it's a lift, but, yeah, it's not good.
So she's been here sixty days?
She has been, and she's, like I said, she's done outstanding jobs, from what I hear, she's very.
Is it thirty, twenty, how old?
It's, she, twenty-four, she's, she does about twenty-four hours a week, unless we're going to be out, and sometimes it's not even, sometimes she works three days a week, one week, and two the next, so, and we need her more than she would come in, so, but she was instrumental in helping with, um, helped plan our Easter event and get sponsors, of course, we had more sponsors than we've ever had, I mean, it was fabulous, she's been instrumental in helping, um, set up our, um, movie events and things like that, so, I mean, she's just come in and hit the ground running, and I really like her.
She has a background in development too, she works for.
Yeah, she.
For five million dollar projects.
Yeah, so, all right, so can I get a, a motion to approve, um, the appointment for Pam Corbin as our part-time clerical, uh, clerk position?
She's going to be, is there, is it going to be a clerk, like city clerk position?
I think it's called an assistant clerk, administrative.
It's administrative, so I'm going to send her for class, but put her in the deputy court, so that we should can get the court class.
Yeah, she knows a lot of it, but there's a few things she didn't, she's, she's been very proactive in looking at our charter, our policies, that's what I liked about it, it's like, she took the job serious, she came in, and she hit the ground running, and I, I love that when somebody will, will take ownership of stuff like that, so, um, all right, can I get a motion to appoint Pam Corbin as our administrative assistant? Chrissy, can I get a second?
I was trying not to be greedy, but I was going to say.
William, ten, all in favor? Unanimous, now can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session? We're all screwed up, I got, I got a lift, we're going to hit the ground running, and we're done, it's just a couple of things that we have to, it's employee, um, our raises and stuff.
Motion to adjourn to executive session?
William, ten, can I get a second?
Second.
Nathan, all in favor? Unanimous, can I get a motion to adjourn for the.
I'm a close to here.
Can we go ahead and get a motion to approve the, uh, the, um.
We're sorry, I'm done yet.
Can I get that again? Where's, oh, he came through earlier, who seconded the adjournment, you go for session?
Go ahead, William and James, and then, can I get a motion to approve the, um, the raises for the employees? Chrissy?
I'll say.
James, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you, and can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
William, can I have a second?